Good evening. Could call the regular board meeting of Tuesday, September fifteenth to order. Just to let you know, this meeting will be audio and video recorded and can be found on our YouTube channel. If we could have an opening prayer, please. Chloe.
In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, Amen. Gracious Creator, we come to you this evening asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion. Allow us to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of a community. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, as you make decisions that might affect the students, staff, faculty, and friends of the Halton Catholic District School Board. Continue to remind us, we pray, that all that we do here today, all that we accomplish, is for the pursuit of the truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of humanity. We ask these in your name through Christ's Lord. Amen. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Thank you. Trustee Intomasi is going to tell us of the motions adopted or information received in camera.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have a number of, we have a lot of activity through HR. In retirements, we have Catherine Coumber, Susan Guzzo, Richard Calvitas, and Catherine Welch, effective June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen, and Ursula Greer, effective July thirty-first, two thousand fifteen. In resignations, we have Peter Bertrand, effective July thirteenth, two thousand fifteen, Pat Daly, effective August seventeenth, two thousand fifteen, Jessica Blair, effective August thirty-first, two thousand fifteen, and Lorian Pachenti, effective September twenty-fifth, two thousand fifteen. Curriculum consultant generalist appointment, we have Joanne Kenny, effective September first, two thousand fifteen, for a period of up to three years. In department head appointments, we have Amanda Morrow, appointed as department head specialist, I'm sorry, department head special education, effective September first, two thousand fifteen, for a period of up to four years. In acting department appointments, we have Paul Cushing, Lilian Vale-Arujo, Chris Haley, Kelly Grant, Guy Kulis, Emily Marcusan, John Colterman, Irina Klippa, Kathleen Berlasso Stone, James DeMello, Maria Kirvin, and Miranda Walsh, appointed as acting department heads, effective September first, two thousand fifteen, up to a period of one year. In hiring of probationary teachers, I will just say it will be as listed because we have a hundred and eight hires. Further, in elementary principals, we have Louise Cronin Nowitzki, appointed as elementary principal, effective September first, two thousand fifteen. Elementary vice principals, Amy Robinson, Lorraine Bullos, and Penny Uni, my apologies, Unyaki, appointed as elementary vice principals, effective September first, two thousand fifteen. Acting elementary principal and acting elementary vice principal at Saint Timothy, Joe Juris, appointed as acting elementary principal, effective September first, two thousand fifteen, with an end date to be determined. Christina DeClarico, appointed as acting elementary vice principal, effective September first, two thousand fifteen, to approximately November thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a mover for the agenda, please? Are there any, sorry, sorry. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Trustee Quinn, trustee Marai.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to ask per bylaw fourteen point one of the procedural bylaws, I'd like to include a notice of amendment to those bylaws in tonight's agenda.
Which one? Do you have a second for that? Do you have a second for that?
We don't need a second.
Thank you, Danielle. Trustee Quinn, I mean trustee Marai.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have four notices of motion for the board. The first is a notice motion on student vote. May I read them in to the record at this point? Whereas we should take every opportunity to engage our students in the democratic process, whereas the student vote project by charity CivX provides a tremendous service to our community and provides a service at no cost, be it resolved, the HCDSB directs staff to ensure every grade five class and grade ten civics class participate in student vote two thousand fifteen, the week of October twelfth to October fifteenth. The HCDSB's board, board staff, direct staff, to ensure every student at the board in grade five or higher has the opportunity to vote in student vote in all future federal, provincial, and municipal elections.
We have some looks of perplexity. Is there any way you can email them for, for people to?
Absolutely, I can. And I, this is for the secretary.
I know, but still, people aren't hearing your whole motion.
Oh, no problem. I can email it out to you. I've given it to the secretary of the board. Notice of motion on parental surveys, whereas trustees look to build a comprehensive process for parental feedback, whereas many of our schools are in population flux, whereas trustees want to better understand the programming needs of our community, be it resolved, the HCDSB digitally survey all families of the HCDSB by October thirty-first, two thousand fifteen, with particular emphasis on the quality of programming at their school, to be approved by the Chair of the Board. That the HCDSB's digital survey specifically asked if they have considered leaving the Catholic school system, with follow-up questions as to why. That the HCDSB complete a year-end survey to all families on an annual basis. Notice three, limits on, limits on principal terms, whereas school communities succeed when there's a culture of renewal, whereas school staff benefit from working under diverse leadership styles, whereas the entire system benefits when there's a cross-pollination of successful programs, be it resolved, the HCSB limit the term of principals and vice principals at one school to seven years. And the final notice of motion is in regards to administrative expenses, whereas the province of Ontario is the most indebted sub-sovereign jurisdiction in the world, whereas the province of Ontario recorded a two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen deficit of ten point nine billion dollars, whereas school boards and municipalities and all government organizations must find ways to operate more efficiently to sustain quality services, whereas the HCDSB has already taken positive steps to reduce administrative expenses in past budgets, whereas the HCDSB wants to sustain and increase frontline student resources, be it resolved, that senior staff present trustees with options to reduce administrative expenses that can be reallocated to frontline resources before the start of the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen budget process.
So we're going to deal with each one individually? Oh. Is there any questions, comments, anything moving on? As amended, could I have a mover for the agenda? Trustee Rabenda, seconded. Trustee Intomasi, all in favor? Thank you. Declarations of conflict of interest? Yes, trustee Danko.
Madam Chair, I'd like to declare a conflict for item eight point two.
No presentations, no delegations. Can I have a mover, please, for the minutes of the June sixteenth regular board meeting? Trustee Rowe? Seconded, trustee Marai, all in favor? So moved. Approval of the minutes of July twenty-first special board meeting? Trustee Intomasi, seconded. Trustee Trites, all in favor? Thank you. Approval of the minutes of the August eighteenth special board meeting? Trustee Carabelle? Oh, sorry.
I just wanted to say something regarding that meeting because we had a lot of discussion about the curriculum on that meeting, and I wasn't sure whether it really reflects that, as well as our, our staff and, and teachers will be directed to use the ICE resources, still, that the current HPV, HPE curriculum is also available as a resource.
So you're adding that into the minutes, Danielle? As amended, do we have a mover? Trustee Quinn, seconded. Trustee Trites, all in favor? So moved. Thank you. For information and summary of outstanding items from previous meetings, action items, eight point one, policy one point oh-nine, school accommodation review consolidation closure, first reading, and policy one thirty-seven, community planning and facility partnerships.
Be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept, accept the recommendation of the policy committee and approve policy I dash nine, school accommodation consolidation enclosure at first reading, and I guess we can deal with these separately, but be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the policy committee and approve I dash thirty-seven, community planning and facility partnerships at first reading.
Do I have a mover? Trustee Quinn for the first one. Seconded by trustee Intomasi, all in favor? So moved. And the second one, may I have a mover? Trustee Rabenda? And seconded by trustee Rowe, all in favor? Thank you. Moving on to policy two point four nine, English as a Second Language and English Literacy Development Programs and Services, second and third readings, trustee Marai.
Be resolved that the Halton Catholic District School?
I'm sorry. Trustee Danko? Oh, yes, I'm so sorry.
Page is it on? Eighty-eight? No, it probably doesn't. Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the policy committee and approve policy two dash forty-nine, English as a Second Language ESL and English Literacy Development ELD Programs and Services at second and third reading.
Do I have a mover? Trustee Rabenda, seconded. Trustee Rowe, all in favor? So moved. Moving on to policy three dash seventeen, Attendance Support Program, second reading, trustee Marai.
The policy committee's been busy again. Be it resolved, the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the policy committee and approve policy three dash seventeen, Attendance Support Program at second reading.
May I have a mover for this motion? Trustee Trites, seconded by trustee Carabella, all in favor? Thank you.
Madam Chair, is there a discussion?
No.
Well, we just voted on a policy, we have an action item. I believe you're supposed to call for a discussion.
All right.
Are we discussing eight point two? Or, sorry, eight point three?
Yes, you asked to?
Yes, yes. The Attendance Support Program, before you call the, the vote, Madam Chair, I'm, I'm not going to support this policy in its current form because, looking at other organizations, I think this is one of those items, this is one of those policies where the procedure is the policy. And if you look at the Attendance Support Programs in other organizations, other publicly municipal organizations, the procedure is part of the policy. For example, if you look at the City of Toronto's Attendance Support Program, the specifics of the procedure are embedded in the policy, and I believe it's that way for a reason. And I think that the audit committee was very wise to point out the fact that we had no approval of the procedure that was being used to support the attendance of employees at our board. Everybody agrees with supporting attendance, that's, that, I think that's a given, but what really is the issue to be voted on and debated is the, the procedure itself. And I think that at the policy committee meeting, you'll recall that, we did discuss the rationale of the audit committee, we did ask for that to be published together with this item on this upcoming agenda, and it's not contained in my package. And the, although the procedure itself was given to us as an appendix, it should be part of the, this public meeting package. So I think that if other municipal bodies and other provincial organizations are, are handling this policy as they are, such as the example of Toronto, I'm looking at the Attendance Management Program for the City of Toronto, absence from work, and it's very similar to ours, so I would like to see a policy that includes what Toronto's policy includes, because I think that's a good best practice. So I can't support this item today.
Trustee Quinn?
Through you, Madam Chair, perhaps, the, the Chair of the Policy Committee, this trustee Marai could explain to me why those discussions and documents that were asked for and Superintendent Supriano agreed to provide to us were not provided before being asked to vote on that motion.
My understanding from that meeting, which happened a week ago, was, was, was that we were going to bring it back again to the policy committee after we voted in, in first reading here, it would go back, we'd have a more fulsome discussion as we usually do at the policy committee with all the documents given. So I think they could have been provided here as well, but I'm satisfied that, that we will receive them and have the discussion in due course, and, and we can pass it or not pass it, either way, we can send it back to the policy committee as, as necessary.
So is this intended to be a voting on the first reading here or the second reading? Because in the purpose, I see second reading, but we write it back to the first reading, I thought.
Yeah, excuse me, second reading. It will go back for a third reading, and that's one, and one of the reasons why we split it between the second and third reading was obviously because we wanted a greater discussion on it at the policy committee.
Through you, Madam Chair, to the Chair of the Policy Committee then. So to vote on this resolution that the school board accept the recommendation of the policy committee and approve policy three seventeen, then what is the purpose of the third reading if we are approving it here in the public session?
For, for further debate in between. Listen, we, we went through this before in the policy committee itself as to the process we'd take. We specifically split it so that we could have further discussion at the policy committee itself. That discussion will have, will take place. If you're still not satisfied with how this policy looks right here, then, then I would suggest you, you don't vote for it, but we'll see those documents at the policy committee, which is the agenda, by the way, that I actually set in approve.
Having had a week away from this, I really do have to wonder why we're approving it in second reading. And I agree, we talked about it last week, and we agreed that that's what we'd do, but listening to the conversation right now, why are we approving it for a second reading? Is it going back out after this reading? It went out after first reading. Is it going back out? So why are we not fixing it before we approve it? I just don't under, I just don't understand it. I'm not saying that I'm opposed to it, I just don't understand it. Because wouldn't we fix it before we approve it?
Trustee Danko?
Madam Chair, I want to thank my fellow board member across the way there, and that's indeed what I'm asking for, is I'm asking for the procedure to be included in the policy because I think that for this particular policy, the procedure is the policy.
All right. So we're sending it back to policy, we, we decided on that. Well, we're still going to call the vote, so. All those, pardon me? I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor of approving for second reading? That motion fails? Not a motion, well, action item. So now it's going back to policy? Or first? Moving on to policy one point nineteen, Occupational Health and Safety Annual Review, trustee Marai.
Madam Chair, be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the policy committee and approve policy one dash nineteen Occupational Health and Safety as presented.
May I have a mover? Trustee Intomasi is seconded. Trustee Rabenda, all in, no, call for discussion? No discussion? All in favor? And, thank you. Staff reports, there are none. Ten point one, Student Trustee Update. Chloe Cimini.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the three of us have just started school, and with that being said, we have to get Senate together, so we're working on getting our student Senate. We sent out applications, each principal from the nine different high schools has been contacted and given the application. So how it works is either the students pick up an application in Student Services or the principal taps students to apply, and then they apply, and we vet the applications, and we choose, this year we're changing it up and choosing two students from each grade just so we can get representation from every group. We're also asking to get some kids from Student Council and Arts Councils and Sports Councils just so we can mix it up and have a diverse student Senate. So this year we're focusing on three things, continuing with bullying prevention, we're trying to grow on that and kind of make it more of a Halton Catholic thing. We're going to continue with the Black History Month Conference, once again, growing and expanding on that, and then we're going to build off of Education Week and have various activities run through the week. So we're hoping on taking those three things, extending them, and making them as great as possible and even better than last year. Good thing Jason and Joel aren't here to hear that. So as of right now, that is all that we have, and that's all that we're planning. We're just getting into the swing of things, so hopefully by the next meeting, we'll have our student Senate present to you, and we'll have a lot of initiatives off the floor and going. So as of right now, that is all I have to report to the board.
Point of order, Madam Chair, just, and I, and I don't want to interrupt, and didn't want to interrupt your fantastic presentation, just, we did forget eight point five at some point, so we could go back there.
I was just going to say, if you could please turn the paper over and do eight point five now. Thank you. Policy three dash fifteen, Workplace Violence Annual Review, trustee Marai.
This is a, yeah, this is a further annual review that we must do as a board. Be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the policy committee and approve policy three dash fifteen, Workplace Violence as presented.
Do I have a mover for that, please? Trustee Quinn, seconded. Trustee Rabenda, call for discussion? No. All in favor? So moved. Now we'll move on to ten point two. If anyone has any questions, Superintendent Overhold, about the school educational field trips. Trustee Carabella? Trustee Rabenda?
Through you, Madam Chair. Just regarding the last trip on the, it's Notre Dame, grade twelve students going to Algonquin Park. So again, it spans over the weekend, and I'm just wondering if the students are able, what the schedule is for the day that they're able to get to Mass on Sunday.
I can answer that. I had conversations with the school, they will be back in time so that they can attend Mass at eight o'clock at Saint Paul's Parish.
Thank you.
Trustee Rabenda, did you have a question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This really just overlaps a little bit with the educational field trips. Really, my, my question is more to E-Tech and the extended field trips. I know that we had a field trip, I believe it was, last year, though at my age, the years begin to run together. We had one where, that came in late to us for some reason or another, and we approved it, but given everything that's going on in Europe these days, I'm just wondering if we are going to be getting any E-Tech trips, and can they come to us sooner than later?
Through you, Madam Chair. We do have a E-Tech committee meeting that's coming up in October. We have a scheduled E-Tech Presentation Board Report beginning of November. We will review all the ones that are currently been approved to, to ensure where they're going in terms of safety-wise, so we will review those ones.
Anyone else have any questions? Seeing none? Move on to the budget report for September one to August thirty-one, two thousand fifteen, preliminary, Superintendent McMahon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a, an update on our year-end, preliminary year-end for the fiscal year-end, August thirty-first, two thousand fifteen. We're in the process of planning for the, the year-end audit, which, and we'll be bringing back financial statements to the board in November. These are preliminary numbers, we brought this forward at this time in prior years, so we continue to do so. One thing I would note, at the bottom of page one, we mentioned presenting the financial reports quarterly to the board, which is in keeping with the ministry direction under the SB memo stated. So the next report you get on the, will, sorry, there'll be, the next report you get on the fifteen, sixteen year would be in November, pardon me, in December, for the, for the quarter that ended in November. So you get the financial statements in, in November, and then in December, get the first report on the fifteen, sixteen year in December. And myself and Roxanne would be happy to answer any questions trustees may have.
Trustee Danko?
Madam Chair, did the treasurer say savings or shavings?
I didn't say either. I was trying to think of something witty, Madam Chair, but it just...
Any other questions? Moving on to the next, Capital Projects Report, as at August thirty-one.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The same comments apply, this is the Capital Projects Report that you, you're used to receiving, it's the preliminary one for August thirty-first. We're still in the process of finalizing the numbers, and, but again, bringing the report forward in at, at this time, as we have done in, in prior years.
Moving on to the ongoing monitoring of school-generated funds activities.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This report is being brought forward based on request at the August eighteenth special board meeting, as indicated in the background. So we listed items in the report that, under each bullet, that we are doing to more closely monitor our school-generated funds activities, and with the goal to, as is indicated in the last paragraph of the report on page two, to eliminating cash, or virtually eliminating cash to the fullest extent possible in our schools. And myself and Roxanne would be happy to answer any questions trustees may have.
Trustee Quinn?
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. Has the Financial Committee calculated what the potential losses to the school-generated funds could be when we switch to ca, sorry, to school cash online only? With the, the second step that is necessary to submit funds for fundraising initiatives, going online, logging in, giving your credit card or interact information, what the negative effects might be of school cash online? And understanding that, I think the average of the last few years that I've looked at has been approximately twelve million dollars generated by school-generated funds, what fees are being paid to this organization of that twelve million? What is their annual take from that twelve million dollars for using their services? Thank you.
Through you, Madam Chair, to trustee Quinn. There is a fee associated with the credit cards. The experience we're getting with, from other jurisdictions is that actually parents wanted that fee. Roxanne, I believe the fee is in, around the two percent, a little less than two percent, I believe. Roxanne, I believe the fee is in, around the 2%, a little less than 2%, I believe, in total, I'll let Roxanne answer the fee part.
Through you, Madam Chair, the fee for the credit card itself is under, just under 2%, 1.96% of the credit card transactions only, not of the entire $12 million, uh, revenue for the year. And there's an operating fee for CAF software, for school cash online, which is, also allows us the, uh, debit option, the, uh, My Wallet and e-Check, uh, payment options, which will be ongoing, and that is 0.8%. So, less than 1% of the, uh, school generated fund revenues, excluding any external charity, uh, fundraisers.
If I may, Madam Chair, um, generally speaking, what we've heard from parents is they want the credit card option rather than the debit, and they're willing to, so, on an event, if, if it was totally credit card, and if, instead of a parent paying $100, they're paying $102 for the ease of transaction, and not having to give cash, you know, and having, uh, having $100 or $10 go away 10 times in cash, um, they're, they're willing to pay that additional.
Through you, Madam Chair, to Superintendent McMahon, I'm, I was thinking more of the smaller donations, the $5, the $10 that parents forgot of their wallets and hand to the kids. That money may not be as easily flowing if there is a step to the, the logging on and logging in. So, I'm wondering if we're worried about potential loss to the overall, and perhaps we could review this in a year and see if we have had any kind of negative.
Uh, Madam Chair, we'd be happy to do that, and, and I do understand more of what Trustee Quinn's saying. Uh, there may be loss on these, it, we're not gonna capture everything with credit card or even debit, as we're using now. Again, we're not gonna, we're not gonna turn away cash, what we do wanna do is have less of it and more control over it. So, certainly, we'll be bringing back the report, uh, the year-end financial statements in a year's time, and we'll, we'll, we'll look at whether the numbers have changed. Thank you.
Trustee Danko?
Madam Chair, will we be publishing the audits of the individual school audits?
Madam Chair, is that in reference to a particular item on here?
The item we're discussing is the.
Yeah, well, um, sorry.
The school-generated funds, uh, monitoring, so if we are mo, if we are auditing schools, uh, as part of the recommendations, um, will we be publishing the audits for, in the sa, in the name of transparency?
Through you, Madam Chair, the results of those, if the audits are done, there, there's two audits, two types of audits that are done. One is through, uh, the, the external auditors, and one is through our regional internal auditors. The results of those go to the Audit Committee, uh, that, we do bring the minutes forward to the board, and the results of each of those audits are communicated to the schools with the Superintendent copied. As well as a general memo goes out to all schools, so they can learn from, uh, what the, uh, the results of, of those audits were. Um, the, the full audit report, uh, is the purview of the Audit Committee. The results of those are, are, maybe Roxanne, you can help me out, I think they're contained in the minutes to, uh, too, so.
Yes, they would be in, uh, in the minutes, um, and the audit reports do go in camera. Um, with regards to the, the central reviews and school visits, in, in case, uh, you were referring to the report, we, uh, handle them in a similar manner, where we send, we will be sending all the schools individually, what they need to improve on, based on the school visit. Um, and a general memorandum will be sent to all schools, and, uh, the principals will be reviewing, and it's their responsibility to implement anything from there, overall, that, uh, may not be implemented within their schools.
Chair, I, I'm heading Trustee Danko off at the pass, 'cause if I may, if a trust, the, the Audit Committee reports to the board, there are three trustees on the Audit Committee. If a trustee or trustees wanted the school-generated funds audit reports from the Audit Committee, we can give those to the other trustees, uh, the other six trustees. We would want it to be done in camera, because there are things mentioned in those reports that point to, um, to potential weaknesses in our controls, and we would not want those, um, out in the public realm.
Trustee Danko?
Madam Chair, I'm glad the Treasurer did head me off at the pass, because that was, that was the question I was going to ask. Um, but I think that the board needs to remember that the province created the regional Audit Committees for the purpose of transparency and accountability to the public. Um, and, uh, the Treasurer is also aware that the Ministry, uh, published a memo, uh, on its administrative website, saying that these, uh, in-camera reports, uh, does not mean, should not be interpreted as meaning that the audit reports are to be kept private. That's not what the intent of the Audit Committee and that memo are. Uh, the spirit of the Audit Committee is to, uh, be transparent and accountable to the public, uh, meaning that the reports ought to be published. And if, uh, the Treasurer is referring to things in our controls that need to be redacted, then the reports ought to be published with those specific, uh, means, if any, are described there, with those specific means of, uh, risks, uh, being, being abused, should be redacted. Otherwise, the reports ought to be published for the public.
Madam Chair, if I may, uh, th, there is, uh, work being done at the ministry level on that exact topic, and there will be further, further guidance forthcoming from the ministry. Um, there is, the topic area that Trustee Danko refers to is a matter of some debate.
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, just a re, a reminder to trustees, um, that, um, any, the financial statements that the schools, um, produce for school-generated funds, which are the subject of the audit, are, will be available on the school websites, um, this year, um, and updated as well, so, um, th, those are public.
Trustee Marai? I'm just to the, to the Treasurer, through you, Madam Chair, um, and, and just piggybacking on Trustee Danko's question, y, you referred to, um, it being a point of discussion with the province. Uh, has there any, been, been any, um, suggestion of the timeline, 'cause this, this did come up, this has come up in past board meetings, and I'm wondering if you have any direction as to when they will, uh, decide, so that, uh, if trustees decide, we can move this, uh, to the board table as a, as a piece of discussion, or the Policy Committee as a, as a piece of discussion going forward?
Madam Chair, I am keeping abreast of this topic, uh, and I do not have a timeline. I would hope that it would be addressed, uh, before Christmas, but, uh, I'm, I'm not, um, gonna make that, uh, you know, make a, a thing. I am involved, as I've indicated to trustees with that, uh, through our council senior business officials, and if I hear of a due date that I can tell you definitively, I most certainly will.
Trustee Danko?
Thank you, Madam Chair, for indulging me once again, but I'm, I'm referring specifically to memo, SB 0, uh, SB 22, 2014, guidance for holding Audit Committee Meetings in closed session. Uh, it was a correction on a previous memo saying where the memo was misinterpreted, to say that all audits ought to be delivered in camera. Um, but this memo is saying that there needs to be a spirit of transparency, and the Ministry updated its guidance in order to achieve that.
Madam Chair, again, uh, I'm familiar with the memo Trustee Danko refers to. There was a memo before that, which is referenced in that memo, and there will be a third one coming out, when the work that I just mentioned is complete, because the second memo caused more confusion than clarity.
Okay, moving on to 10.6, Trustee Town Halls Update.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. Uh, this report, uh, is provided to trustees to update on the results of, uh, the various town halls that took place in June, that fulfilled a requirement to hold an annual education town hall as per Board Resolution Number 23-14. And also, an opportunity to provide parents and rape pairs with information related to the strategic planning process. In your report, you will notice, um, how the town halls were communicated to parents, and how follow-up surveys, uh, were sent out and are made available. There are, um, charts in your package on page 135, and it outlines the number, the first chart talks about the location and the number of attendees, and then the surveys and comment sheets returned. The second, uh, talks about the survey results, uh, that we received in hard copy after the parents, uh, left for the evening. And the last chart talks about which, uh, on that survey, how parents wish to be, um, corresponded to, and their preferred method of consultation. And, uh, I'm happy to take any questions, uh, regarding to this report.
Uh, through you, Madam Chair, a question for the Director, and that is, um, I know this past year, there were some concerns over the timing of the town hall, and, um, I think it was appreciated, all the work that staff did to get it, uh, done before the end of the school year. Um, I'm wondering if there's been any discussions as to the timeline for the next town hall, and, um, how it may or may not, um, uh, be part of a, of a, of a budget process.
Through you, Madam Chair, um, after, when we chat this evening, caucus afterwards, when we talk about the strategic plan and, and the consultation methods, perhaps we can also deliberate on, uh, another town, type of consultation that you would like to do on that area.
Okay, moving on to 10.7 Superintendent Cipriano, Implementation of School Uniforms.
Thank you, uh, through you, Madam Chair, present this information, report outlining the continued implementation of these elementary school uniform in our ele, in our elementary schools. Uh, the, the report provides background information for you on the history of the school uniforms, uh, including the evolution of Board Policy 241. As you can see from the updated chart, now, all of our 45 elementary schools have undertaken the school uniform process and community votes, since the updating changes to this policy that were last, uh, completed in 2013. The only exceptions being the four elementary schools, St. Gabriel, Guardian Angels, St. James, and St. Elizabeth Seaton, uh, which had adopted the school uniforms based on the prior, uh, version of the, the uniform policy. Of our 45 elementary schools, 28 schools now are in uniform. All of our elementary schools have met the minimum requirement to conduct a vote under this current policy. So, going forward, uh, the only schools that will be required to vote will be, uh, brand-new, uh, elementary schools. All other schools have the ability to, uh, conduct a vote, whether to remain in uniform, or to eliminate a uniform, or whether to go into a uniform, uh, once every three years. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Trustee Quinn?
Through you, Madam Chair, to the Superintendent, could he give us an update on the status of the contract with McCarthy's? Uh, and how that may affect, uh, our need to plan as a board going forward?
Through you, Madam Chair, um, I just wanna confirm with our Superintendent Business Services, if, if I have the, the date, is that public that I could, I can express publicly, or should, should it be in a, in camera session?
Madam Chair, I, sorry, I do not have the, the information that, so I, I can't comment, so, okay. I don't, I don't, I'm not aware even of, Roxanne, are you aware of the?
I, I agree.
Okay. Um, if there is an RFP pending, Camilla, we should not be, uh, we should not be talking about it in terms of.
Sorry.
If there's any.
I have, I have the expiry date of the contract.
Oh, that's okay.
Can I share that date? Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, the expiry of our contract with McCarthy's, RJ McCarthy's is December the 31st, 2016.
There's nothing else, we'll move on to School Drinking Water Lead Content Test Results, and Superintendent Corbaccio.
Thank you, Madam Chair, you have before you our annual, uh, test results of, uh, lead content in school drinking water. We have, uh, two schools, Bishop Reading and St. Rayville, will be added to our daily flush routine, and St. Gabriel's, in assumption, have one year remaining. All of the schools will be on a weekly basis, and all the test results and background information have been posted on our website as well. If you'd please answer any questions.
Trustee Quinn?
Through you, Madam Chair, what would lead to test results in the school's drinking water being different than the houses and the other businesses and things close to, to, close to schools? What are we seeing differently in the buildings themselves that would cause us to have to monitor the water?
Madam Chair, I'm not familiar of the lead content in the area businesses, the residences, I'm only aware of the results of our testing within our schools, as per the Ontario Regulation that we follow. So, it's just a matter of, uh, of good practice that it's done on a weekly or daily basis, to ensure that there is no lead content, uh, within the drinking water. And the lead content, uh, standard set by the provinces is very stringent, very high, so, these are really, I can't even pronounce the definition, almost small, I mean, a skill, 10 pounds of lead that we find in the, so, the water is, is very good. And the water comes from the region, it's not, that's the source of the water, so we're just, uh, testing the water once it gets to our source.
Thank you. Moving on to Missus Members, uh, Information and the OCSTA Membership.
Through you, Madam Chair, uh, included in trustee's package, uh, is a memo that came to directors and copied to board chairpersons, um, outlining, um, Oxta's mission, the budget for the 2015-16 school year, um, and some major benefits of the Oxta membership fee. And I'm happy to turn it over to trustee Aunt Tomasi for further comment.
Thank you, uh, Madam Director. Uh, through you, Madam Chair, I just wanted to add that I have spoken, because, uh, Trustee Quinn had expressed some concerns about the cost and the benefits to our students, that Kathy Bertnik, the President, and Kevin Colbus, who is exiting soon, um, but they both have offered to come and speak to our board. They've done it before to Toronto, they've gone to other boards, if you have any specific questions, or, you know, if, if this isn't enough to satisfy you, they're very happy to come down, we just have to give them some notification, but they wanted me to extend that offer. Uh, there's one thing I did look on here, and, and what they don't really s, speak to clearly, I think, is, um, the fact that we have the Catholic Education Week, we have our Focus on Faith, and, and they develop that program with our Bishops of Ontario. So, now, when you're speaking about students and the benefit, it, it doesn't matter what school they go to in Ontario, that same program is being delivered, and I think that's a huge plus, that, that didn't exist prior to the work that they did.
Trustee Quinn?
Through you, Madam Chair, to the Director, as the Ontario Catholic School Trustees Association are committed in the Education Act to being the bargaining unit on behalf of all the trustees and the boards across the country, are we obligated, through that part of the Education Act, to pay the fees annually? Or is it still something that our board decides in the budget process to pay those fees?
I'm not aware, so I'll have to get back to you on that.
Anyone else have a question? All right, we have, um, in your package, you have a flyer about Bishop Crosby, um, I think everybody, has everyone been there before? It's great, Chloe, you've gotta go. Um, and the Policy Committee minutes of June, June 9th are in, closed here. Uh, correspondence, we have none, not have to go back in camera, we have no absentees, so we'll ask, uh, for an adjournment, please? Pardon, I'm sorry, you have the item, what number was that gonna be? Pardon me? to be? Pardon me? Ten point nine. Okay, you're up, Anthony.
Thank you. Maybe I'm up. Through you, Madam Chair. To my fellow trustees, uh, whereas the Halton Catholic District School Board of Trustees is publicly elected body and whereas the HCDSB seeks to enhance transparency of the decisions made by the trustees elected by Catholic voters and families of the Halton region, and without intending to slow down the business of school board meetings, I hereby propose an amendment of Bylaw eleven point six, method of voting, to include a provision that all votes of the Halton Catholic District School Board of Trustees, considered in public and in-camera sessions, be recorded and included in the minutes of said meeting and that this notice be referred to the board for study and report without undue delay. Thank you.
For your information. All right, Dan, thank you. Um, now, if I could ask for, yes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to point out that, uh, our Chloe was on the agenda last week. I only saw the week in review on Friday. She did an amazing job. But I do think it's worth pointing out that if we want to go back and see it, I know I'm going to. Yeah, made us proud. It was really good. I was so shocked. So, I thought I would, yeah. I, I ended up saying, oh, there's my Chloe. And I thought, no, my Chloe's in university. There's my other Chloe. So, um, I just wanted everybody to be aware of that. I, I haven't had time to see it yet, but I just know it's going to be well worthwhile.
But just while we're talking about it, what was the topic and, and on whom were you speak, on whose behalf were you speaking?
Oh, yeah. Um, so the topic was called Accountability in Education and it was basically discussing who speaks, um, for education. So, Janet Ecker was there. She's a former Minister of Education. Um, Dorita Wilson, she's the Director for Society of Quality of Ed- Education. Ann Hawkins was there, who is OECTA President. And then, myself. And then, uh, Margot Still, she's a trustee for TDSB. And then, obviously, Steve was there. So, we were just discussing who speaks on behalf of students and stakeholders in education and all that. So, it was really, it was really fun and interesting.
Anything else to add? No, so now I'm going to ask for, uh, motion to adjourn. Trustee Quinn, seconded by trustee Trits, all in favor. So, moved. And trustee Danko, if you could lead us in closing prayer?
In the name of the Father and of the Son and the Holy Spirit, amen. A student's prayer. Creator of all things, true source of light and wisdom, lofty source of all being, graciously let array of your brilliance penetrate into the darkness of my understanding and take from me the double darkness in which I have been born, sin and ignorance. Give me a sharp sense of understanding, a retentive memory and the ability to grasp things correctly and fundamentally. Grant me the talent of being exact in my explanations and the ability to express myself with thoroughness and charm. Point out the beginning, direct the progress, help in the completion through Christ our Lord. Amen. Saint Thomas Aquinas.